My allergy is just, my-
Good evening. The February 13th, 2024 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Please place your mobile phones on silent mode for the meeting. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Iaplo.
Here.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Present.
Ms. Marchaza.
Present.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here. Thank you, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome everyone to the February 13th, 2024 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website, and the agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda where the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it be an item on the agenda or another topic. To participate in the Hearing of the Public section, interested speakers must sign up prior to the start of the meeting. Signups are available online through the school district's website or onsite prior to 7:00 PM. You will be called to the microphone when it is your turn to speak, and at that time, we will ask that you please state your name and address questions to the board president. Each person may speak only once per segment, and comments are limited to three minutes. The purpose of the Hearing of the Public is for our community members to address the board. The board continues to welcome feedback from the community as an important component to conducting business. This is an information gathering opportunity for the board and administration so that we can work to best serve our community. If, at the end of the public participation, we do not make a statement, please know this does not demonstrate a lack of care for comments shared by our community. Rather, we want to be thoughtful in our approach, and we will provide a response in a timely manner when appropriate. This meeting is being televised live and on a delayed basis, and will be shown on Spectrum Cable Channel 1026 in Mener and Channel 1025 in Mener-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being recorded and can be found on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mener, Ohio. Thank you. We have our district highlights and recognitions, which we don't have any tonight. And so we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next, we have Hearing of the Public on Agenda Items Only.
There is none.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have the superintendent's report and recommendations.
Good evening, everyone. Couple of things here this evening. First, at our last meeting, there was some conversation around the discontinuation of our ESER funding after this year and what our plans might be, so I do want to go through a couple of things with everyone here this evening on those particular items. Due to the increased numbers of students in need of academic intervention, Tier Two and Tier Three, the district decided to provide students with Tier Two literacy gap closing interventions district-wide. This past year, 23 long-term ESER intervention specialists were hired to provide Tier Two research-based interventions. Three intervention teachers were assigned to each of our seven elementary schools, and two intervention teachers were assigned to the middle schools. Additionally, we have used ESER funding to increase our student mental health services through Crossroads. Because this is the final year for ESER funding, there is a plan for next school year to ensure that student needs are still being met despite the decrease in staffing. First, we will have a reduction of 24 intervention teachers, 20 at the elementary level, four at the middle school level. Tier Two, along with Tier One student interventions, will once again be provided by classroom teachers and paraprofessionals. This is part of our response to intervention model. At the elementary level, instructional coaches will provide embedded professional development and support for the implementation of small group Tier Two interventions and how they can be provided within the classroom on an ongoing basis. At the middle schools, the number of literacy and math coaching classes will be decreased, and these students will be added to existing coaching classes, which will increase the number of students in these classes. Our teachers will continue to use computer-based programming to differentiate instruction on a daily basis, using things like iReady reading and math, and Math Excel. Building principals and our building-level teams will continue to monitor building data to determine specific student needs and how to best address these needs with given staffing. The district leadership team will continue to track student progress using our district benchmark data three times a year. We utilize STAR and iReady for those purposes. These will allow us to determine needs for future professional development and programming. Student mental health supports that the district provides through Crossroads will continue, and the expense will be absorbed by the general fund. We have been working closely with our new routing software company and our transportation department to get our procedures for bus routes in place earlier than we normally do for the 2024-25 school year. In order for this to happen, we are going to be adding a transportation component as part of our annual update. We will be asking families that have students going into grades K through eight to opt out of transportation if they will not be sending their child to school on a bus next year. We did a little bit of that this summer, but we're just going to be a little bit more purposeful with that process this year. We will be asking families that have students going into grades nine through 12 to opt in to transportation if their child needs a bus to get to the high school next year. We will need this information from families here in March so we can start running our new routing software to make the routes more efficient and more accurate moving forward. We do understand this is a shift in practice, so we will be sending out numerous communication pieces to families now and through spring break to try and get this process completed. We know that transportation needs may change between now and the beginning of next school year, but we will be able to make immediate adjustments to our routes to make sure students can get to school utilizing this new software program. I know we will have more conversation around the cell phone policy during Unfinished Business this evening, but I wanted to share a few items with everyone that we have been working on here administratively to prepare for our next steps. In our quarterly meeting with the Mentor Teachers Association on December 6th, the topic of cell phones was discussed. It was primarily a high school discussion topic, so Mr. Crow began working with his department facilitators to brainstorm some ideas on how to implement what we currently have in our policy. When Mrs. Iaplo brought up this topic at our January meeting, we started digging into the language we have in not only our policy, but also in our high school, middle school, and elementary school handbooks to see what direction we might need to head. We had additional conversations with our administrative team and with the MTA Executive Board last week to talk through some potential next steps. I've created a draft of an administrative guideline for this policy that incorporates much of the language that is in our handbooks for easy reference and implementation. I believe there is consensus on the philosophy regarding the use of cell phones across the board, so once we finish our discussion this evening and get the exact language we will want to use, we can quickly communicate the policy, the guideline, and the handbook language, and begin enforcing the rules in earnest across all of our school buildings. And finally, we are very close to kicking off our new strategic planning process. We have finalized two different organizations to facilitate our work this spring. Triad Research is going to be helping us conduct the community survey portion of this process. They have done previous surveys of our community in the past and are highly respected for their professional approach and data analysis. Mrs. Estes, our Director of Communications, and I had our initial meeting with them late last week to give them an overview of the topics, goals, and action steps we currently have in our strategic plan so they can begin to create a comprehensive list of questions that we will ask our community. Once we have that draft, we will be sharing it with our administrative team and our board members to ensure we have all of the topics we feel are important for our final survey. The survey will be completed electronically and will be completely anonymous. We will send it through email to all of our staff and families with the contact information we have in our databases. We will have it posted on our website and distribute it through our normal communication channels, so it will be available to our community partners, our support organizations, and our business and industry groups. We have selected the Learner-Centered Collaborative to facilitate our strategic planning initiative. They come to us out of our connections nationally with the League of Innovative Schools. We selected them because they bring a student-centered approach to strategic planning and will push us to think more innovatively as we identify the goals and action steps for our new plan. As part of their process, we will create a portrait of a graduate that will identify the skills, knowledge, characteristics, and traits that we feel a student should develop through their pre-K through 12 experiences here in Mener schools. This will be tied closely to the academic components of the strategic plan that we develop as well. The most important part of the plan that they will also help us create is a scorecard that will identify the measurable outcomes for the goals we develop. They will also come back and work with our teams as we collect and analyze the data from the scorecard so we can adjust any action steps that are not having the impact that we expected. Our initial meeting with their facilitation team will be next Friday as we determine the steps we need to take to create our partner groups of students, staff, parents, business leaders, administrators, and community members. Their facilitators will be onsite for five full days of interviews, collaboration sessions, and goal creation meetings throughout this process. As I mentioned previously, I absolutely love this type of work and can't wait to see what we can create through our process this spring. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade. I have the following recommendations listed under the Consent Agenda and recommend approval of items 6A1 through 6A5.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Oh.
Can we have discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay.
Any discussion?
I just had one point to make, especially because of discussions we had around OHSAA for the last two years. So I just wanted to mention that due to House Bill 68, they will be updating their bylaws and rules to align with that, and that's effective, I believe, in April. So just wanted to mention that.
And we've been in conversation with our athletic director too, who serves as Secretary of the Northeast Region of OHSAA, so we've got a direct conduit right to them to get those updates.
Perfect. Thanks. Any more discussion? All right, seen none. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the Eastopples Certificate related to the retention pond easement and access easement.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the Shared Resource Center Agreement for Payroll Consulting and Training Services.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo, excuse me, Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to Certified Personnel.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C2 related to Classified Personnel.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Abstain.
Ms. Payne.
Abstain.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of Agenda Items C3 related to non-contractual compensation and C4 related to supplemental contracts.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item D related to Administrative Staff.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Next, we have the Board of Education Report and Recommendations. The first item under Board Business is the first reading of the Mener Board of Education Neola Policies, and because this is a first reading, no vote is necessary.
Couple of comments on that. Just for the first reading of Board Policy 3242, there is a slight adjustment to what was originally posted, where it says Curriculum Liaison Committee. In the last sentence, that was actually removed and replaced with Local Professional Development Committee. When that was added, that should still say Curriculum Liaison Committee. So the only change to that policy should be in the fourth sentence, where we're changing the Local Professional Development Committee and replacing it with the Curriculum Liaison Committee. Hold on, did I say that right? Yes, replacing the Curriculum Liaison Committee. The reason for that change is that the LPDC establishes, the guidelines assesses, and approves the professional development plans for staff members. When we sent out that email communication, we ended up deleting both of the sections in there, and that last sentence is still something that we do where during our Curriculum Liaison Committee meetings, we do share the professional development plans from an overall standpoint with our board liaisons there. So that part stays. The part in the fourth sentence is the part that changes because that's done by the Local Professional Development Committee. So just wanted that point of clarification on that one.
Okay. Any other discussion?
This is about the first reading on 150, no, 173.
Yes.
So when I looked at 173, and then I did a term search in our policy manual, I could see overlaps that would be impacted if we make changes to 173. It would impact 152, 153, 154, and 155. Excuse me. So just looking back, when we've had our organizational meetings in the past, it was a little different process than we had at our organizational meeting in January, where it was more of just kind of a looser collaborative decision about roles that folks would play. And they were appointed then by the President of the Board. So if we are removing that in number three, in 173, then we would have to move from appointees, those things in 153 that are remaining over to 154, where it would use a vote. And then the other piece that I recalled was several years ago, on that organizational meeting, one of our board members was absent due to illness. If you had a tie on something, if the board president doesn't have like a tie-breaking ability, we'll have a problem because, as I understand it, all of those roles and positions must be assigned in that first half of January each year. So we need to consider how we can prepare ahead in the event that something like that occurs so that there's consistency and clarity.
I too found that, this is hard, I can't see everybody, but I didn't actually notice in 0152 and 155, but I saw probably something similar in 153 and 154, where we have kind of both, you know, language appointing and voting, and so I can definitely see where we ran into confusion there. So, but yeah, I'm glad. Thank you for pointing out the additional policies that we should update as well. Somebody else said something they wanted to add?
Did we, I think we discussed a couple of policies that needed to be updated. That was in January. Did we end up updating those, or is that for a future meeting?
So we did the first reading. We knew that there was one more that needed another first reading, which was 173.
That's right.
And then we would vote on all of them for the final approval at the March meeting.
Are some of these the same ones that they're referencing that are being updated, or are these different?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought so.
So there was a lot of subtle changes to the language, and just as a reminder for the entire board, so in 151, which is the organizational meeting, there's a sentence that's added at the end of that policy that will now read, "At the organizational meeting, board liaisons to administrative committees may be appointed by the superintendent." So that gets into those committees that are actually administrative in function as opposed to board committees themselves.
Could you repeat that again? That's 0151?
That's in 151. The additional language says, "At the organizational meeting, board liaisons to administrative committees may be appointed by the superintendent." And if you recall from the organizational meeting, those were the Curriculum Liaison Committee and the School Safety Committee, which was the new one that we added, so that we have a couple of members of our board sitting in on some of those administrative meetings with us. So that's one addition.
Craig, just so the other board members know too, if you go to the January meeting, it's under the first reading, so you can pull it all up. All of those other ones are mentioned, just to follow along if anybody else wanted to. It's under 7A.
So the other changes, when we look at 153, which are the appointees, that is where we eliminated several items. The School Safety Liaison Committee members, the Curriculum Liaison Committee members, which are now covered in 151, so we're covered there. We removed the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee members because that one went to policy, hold on, 6836, which is the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee policy. We got rid of H, which is a member to serve as compliance officers, a member to serve as hearing officer, we got rid of, and then a designate to attend public record access training required for board members for each term of office. And then we also got rid of a general legal advisor. So we eliminated several things out of the appointees' policy.
Can I make a further recommendation around language? Maybe Jenny, you said this and I missed it, but at the very top, it does say, "The board shall appoint," when really, we're not appointing. The board president appoints, or the superintendent appoints. What we did was vote. So if we don't change this from appoint to vote, perhaps we consider moving it to, yeah, 154.
I would agree with that, too. I think it was very confusing because what we have always done in the past is the president would appoint, and the president always appointed the Legislative Liaison, Student Achievement, and Mener Schools Foundation Board. And in the current policy 0154, it actually states that, that the, I'm sorry, it's not.
Oh, I have it. It says, "The board shall, at the organizational meeting, vote on the following." This is 0154.
Yes. And then on 01, the one that Jenny just mentioned was...
0151?
173?
173 is the one we're reading today.
0173 for today. Our current policy states that the president will appoint all committees, and this is where it got really confusing because as we're going into an organizational meeting, we have policy that says the president will appoint. I am thinking I'm about to appoint in a couple of days. I am calling people and saying, "I would like to appoint you for this position. Are you interested?" And this is where it gets murky because we have 0173 that clearly says I have the authority to appoint, and then the other one says that the board appoints. And when the board appoints, it really calls for a vote. So when we didn't have consensus, we just decided, "Let's go ahead and have the discussion. Let's be, you know, in the issue of team building. Let's have a discussion. Let's vote." And, you know, it's unfortunate that we had a lot of, you know, kind of issues that resolved around that, but I think that we really need to clear up this language so it doesn't happen again. We want to make sure that we know when we're going into it that, I think what we're deciding right now is that we would like to vote in the future, and we can just go ahead and make sure that that language is clear. But to Mrs. Jesslyn's point, we do need to have some provision if there were to be a tie.
That's a good point. And I think we have for the curriculum... And I think we have for the curriculum and the safety committee, I think we had decided that Mr. Heath would kind of appoint those if there's, you know, more people than positions open. And that's kind of how we did. So I don't know if that language also needs to be...
I thought we talked about that one already.
We've got that, yeah, we've got that included in 151.
Okay.
That's that one additional sentence there, so that part's taken care of.
So maybe something like that needs to be added for the scenario that they were speaking of?
In the event of a tie?
Yeah, in the event of a tie. For board, we wouldn't have a tie for the superintendent appointments.
Just for the...
For the board appointments, we need to come up with a way that we would break a tie.
And then those all have to be moved to 154 so that they become voted items rather than just appointed?
So really, what we're saying is everything out of 153 would just go to 154?
Yeah, I think we'd merge those two, right?
That's my understanding with the exception of E through K because those were already struck in a first reading or proposed.
Yep.
Does that make sense to everyone at the table?
Yes.
Yes.
Is everyone okay with that? Because we'll see it for a second reading at the next meeting if we change that from appointees that we now want it to be voted on. So we would change it from an appointment to a motion and a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And then in the event of a tie, what is our proposal?
So the tie would only happen if we were missing a member, right?
I think it would be very rare. Mrs. Juslin did have that occur during her tenure. So I guess we do need to have a safety net.
Well, and how, so I have a question about that whole scenario. If somebody is not here for the organizational meeting, then do they just not get any position because they don't get to vote? You know, or can they still be nominated?
They can still be nominated and appointed.
Okay.
You don't need to vote to appoint somebody. But just because you appoint someone doesn't mean you can't vote. Because, for example, we're appointing members to the Citizens Financial Advisory tonight, and the board is voting on it. One doesn't preclude the other.
Okay, so just to make sure I've got this right then, because I'll get this written up, and just as an FYI, I'll probably run it through legal counsel just to make sure too, that we're still covered here. So under 153, letters A through D, and then letter L, will all be included in policy 154, under motions, where the original sentence reads, "The board shall, at the organizational meeting, vote on the following." And then those will be included there. So 153 goes away. All of those move into 154. And then the other items that we had already eliminated out of there, letter E was already moved to 154, letter F was already moved to 154, letters G and H are no longer needed, letter I is moved to 6836, and J and K are actually covered in 151. Everybody got that?
Yes.
There's a quiz afterward, so make sure everybody's ready.
There's also in 155, under committees, it goes back to that same language, "Members shall be appointed by the board." So we need to correct that, so it's a voted motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Just the language, right?
Right, right. So just...
Which one was that, 155?
So this is 155, after the big paragraph and the little one, and the one below that says, "Members shall be appointed by the board." So voted on?
So change...
Shall be selected?
So members shall be voted by the board?
Appointed by the board through a vote?
That gets confusing again. I mean, for me, it would be, I don't know.
The board shall vote for...
Shall vote to appoint?
Nope, that's two verbs. It's not going to work.
The board shall vote for members to serve on the committee?
Members shall be voted upon by the board?
Oh, I like that.
I think voted upon works. It's the best of the bad options so far.
Words are hard.
It's clumsy to put it, but as long as it doesn't say appointed.
Okay, so members shall be voted upon by the board.
Confirm by a vote?
Board will vote.
Vote to confirm? No, it's... Take whatever you got. When you're talking to the lawyer, he's supposed to be good with words.
Maybe he'll have some.
So I'll get the clarification from legal and we'll make sure that that's out there. So we'll see that the word appointed will be removed and somehow the word voted will be in. And we'll make sure that that's a clean sentence there.
Perhaps something could be added here too, in the event of a tie.
Okay.
And I'm trying to think of where that would live. Maybe that would live under committees. In the event of a tie at the organizational meeting, a tie shall be...
Could you put it in 154? Where the vote is occurring?
Oh, okay.
That might be.
It would live wherever the tie could exist. So if it could exist in multiple places, it'd have to live there.
So we'll get some language around ties, how to break ties from legal as well.
Thank you.
Okay. So then going back to 173.
Yes.
So are we still okay with removing appoint all committees then out of there? Because we've got everything else covered in all of the others now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. That sounds good.
So these are moving to 154. Okay, I think I got it.
If the president, you could, I've reserved comment for a long time. You could here, if the president's going to be the person who is the tiebreaker, you could replace appoint all committees with the president will, if a tie exists, you could put it there. Because that could be the role of the president, which is often the case in many presiding officers.
That makes sense.
To do that, you could do that there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So we could consider that and have a legal weigh-in on that for us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll get that, get all of those updated and sent out to everyone so we know what we're voting on in March.
We will be very prepared next time. The second item under Board Business is the approval of the resolution to approve board member expense reimbursement. And these will be called out separately as each board member requesting reimbursement will abstain from voting on their own resolution. And the first is the resolution to approve reimbursement for Mrs. Iapolo.
So moved?
Second?
Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Juslin?
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo?
She's abstaining.
She has to say it though. Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Resolution to approve the reimbursement for Mrs. Marchaza.
So moved?
Second? Please call the roll.
Ms. Juslin?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Abstain.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Next, we have the reappointment of the Citizens Financial Advisory members for 2024.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Iapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Juslin?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
And the last item under Board Business is the appointment of a Citizens Financial Advisory member for 2024.
So moved?
Second?
Any discussion?
Just very grateful for that whole committee. And there's their selfless service to our district.
Absolutely. We had many candidates for this round, and they were excellent. We just had an excellent pool of people, a lot of talent willing to serve on the district, and that was really exciting. So I thank everyone. I'm excited to welcome our new member, a lot of talent, so. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Juslin?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Next, we have the legislative report. Ms. Marchaza?
There's a lot happening. I will try to move quickly though. For starters, the State Board and DEW updates, the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, had their first public meeting with their new director, Steve Dakin. They proposed some rules for the Ohio Administrative Code. They proposed, or put them open for public comment. That time period has since closed, but now they're going to review public input and make any changes before the director approves them. The State Board of Education launched their Ohio Teacher of the Year nominations. Those are open through March 31st. I highly recommend folks nominate their favorite teachers. That's pretty much it for those two bodies. Onto activity in the State House, which is dense. I'm not going to cover everything, as I mentioned in my last report. There is just so much happening around education. It would be impossible to go over all of the bills, so I'm trying to give you the highlights on the latest activity in motion on some of these bills. But for starters, Governor activity, Governor DeWine signed HB 101, which is, it modifies the law regarding village dissolution, which doesn't sound like it would have much effect on school districts, but it actually does because it makes some education-related budget corrections related to primary and secondary education. This was signed by the governor on January 20th, and that goes into effect on April 30th. It also clarifies some responsibilities around the State Board of Education and other changes since the DEW has taken over and those transitions have taken place. I think very importantly, I want to just mention that Governor DeWine assembled quite a while ago, if you all recall, there was a bus accident back in August of last year in which a little boy passed away. And after that tragic accident, Governor DeWine assembled a school bus safety working group to kind of not just, you know, think through the issues related to that accident, but just to do a big, kind of, not an overhaul, but a deep dive study into what we could do to improve our busing systems, our buses, and make them safer overall. So Governor DeWine announced the report's conclusion and recommendations back on January 31st, and there were six main areas of concern. One is statewide bus driver shortage, which is something I know I have talked about a lot personally, in that the report acknowledges that definitely there is one statewide, and that puts a strain on our drivers as well as our overall systems. It, another area of concern was professional development and training and education for drivers, and also safety education for students, helping them understand what it means to be a safe bus rider and to respect the driver, those sorts of things. School bus safety features was another area of concern, road traffic and safety, emergency response, you know, better preparing drivers to respond to emergencies so they can, you know, help folks who are in crisis before emergency responders get there. And then kind of making the connection between those drivers as well as the Ohio State Highway Patrol. And commercial bus services was the last area of concern. So there were, I believe, 17 total, yes, recommendations. I won't list them all here. They're easy to find online, but those 17 recommendations were, they came up with these using, actually OSBA did, the Ohio School Board Association, of which we are members, did a number of studies to help inform those conclusions, which were really appreciated by the governor. So I do highly recommend you checking those out. They were very insightful, and I'm happy to answer any questions at any point about those recommendations. Onto State House updates. The House had a session on February 7th. There were some committee hearings today, which included the Primary and Secondary Education Committee, and then there is an upcoming Senate session on February 28th at 1:30. Right at the top of the list is something that was already mentioned tonight, which is HB 68. HB 68 prohibits gender-affirming care for minors and also requires school districts to, and state institutions of higher education and private colleges, to designate separate single-sex teams and sports for each sex. That was vetoed by Governor DeWine on January 3rd, as we all know, overridden by the House of Representatives on January 10th, as well as the Ohio Senate on January 24th. This now goes into effect on April 23rd. I think that's all we're going to say about that for now. And we're just sort of, you know, going to, I think, work with, as we mentioned earlier, work with our legal counsel, and really, it's not in effect yet, so we're just, we're not really ready to make any motion there.
Just as an FYI too, not to interrupt, but we did ask our legal counsel for some advice and guidance on that. And he and his team are working through that for all of their member schools, so there's a lot still to come, obviously, because there's so many impacts to public education there too.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. Senate Bill 217, this one is moving along pretty quickly. This passed both the House and the Senate. It's now heading to the governor's desk for signature. It will incorporate free-market capitalism content into the high school financial literacy standards for the state. So what this is, is basically, we already have financial literacy standards, there are 27 of them currently. So this would add 10 additional standards, which is a lot. So this is expanding it. And, you know, just for reference, financial literacy has more to do with, you know, how to set up a bank account, how to manage your checkbook, how to manage your finances. So this is adding 10 concepts about capitalism into that. There are some other pieces and parts to this bill as well, but it's important to note that, you know, it's moving to the governor's desk, so we could see changes on this fairly soon, and we would have to consider, you know, what that means for our own standards and how we're going to have teachers implement those in the classroom. House Bill 2 is, the actual formal title is to create local jail facility funding programs, which again, sounds like it has nothing to do with education, but this one actually contains $600 million for the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission to use for school building improvement across the state. So that actually could be relevant for us. This one passed the House, 7519, and now heads to the Senate, but we're, folks that I've spoken with aren't really sure whether this will pass, so to be determined. House Bill 214, relevant to school districts because it would require each public school to adopt a policy regarding certain expectations related to the performance of staff member professional duties. So this would require us basically to create new policy, so that's why I'm keeping an eye on this one. And specifically, it would, it would ask that schools not require employees or job applicants to offer an opinion about specific beliefs, affiliations, ideals, or principles. This one already passed the House, and it had a committee hearing in the Senate Education Committee on January 23rd where they heard testimony. House Bill 348, this one is to establish pilot programs to increase student attendance with financial incentives. Pretty controversial from what I've heard so far. This one still has a ways to go, but just should be something that we're all aware of. It had a committee hearing in January. House Bill 339, this one, this bill is intended to establish the non-chartered educational savings account program. These are basically savings accounts that would be eligible for students attending schools that basically have opted out of any state oversight. So that's, you know, certainly something to watch. In House Primary and Secondary Education Committee, two hearings so far, only for sponsor and proponent testimony. House Bill, almost done. House Bill 344, this one is really important to watch. This one would eliminate the authority for levy replacement property tax levies, so it would eliminate replacement levies. This would affect, you know, some school districts, not ours, since we don't have any, but also things like libraries, any institution that uses, that relies on replacement levies any institution that uses, that relies on replacement levies for funding would be affected. But where it would be relevant for us is that this bill would actually make it harder for us to challenge property valuations, which we sometimes do when it comes to, these are commercial properties, mind you, not residential properties. So that is something that we need to watch. It's gaining a lot of speed in their, in committee hearings. It actually had three just in the last month or so, so just, for some reason, it's gaining steam. We'll want to keep an eye on that. The Joint Committee on Property Tax Review, they met recently on, let's see, the second time on February 7th. This group is tasked with making recommendations on how to proceed with bills related to property taxes, to really just avoid tax burdens on individuals, and as well as, you know, they're trying to see how these bills might affect or cause issues for public school districts and their funding. So at that most recent meeting, they met with the County Auditors Association and the Board of Tax Appeals. So we don't really know when they're going to meet next, but they do say that their work will be done sometime between March and June. Finally, new legislation was introduced, House Bill 402 by Representative Jean Schmidt. She proposed this bill that would authorize a property tax reduction in 2023 for properties with increased tax liability relative to 2022. And House Bill 387, this one would dissolve existing academic distress commissions, repeal the law that creates new commissions, and declare an emergency. That one's currently in House committee, so still a very long way to go on those two. And that's it.
Thank you very much. It was very helpful. It was thorough, but you explained it really well for a summary. Next, we have the Student Achievement Report from Mrs. Jessling.
Yes, thank you. A balanced education means providing multiple ways for students to experience, explore, solve problems, and meet challenges. Most of these happen in the classroom, but Mentor also offers an abundance of activities to support the development of well-rounded, successful students ready for life after graduation. Here is a sampling. A regional DECA competition was recently hosted here in Mentor. The Distributive Education Clubs of America is one of the Career Tech student organizations that provides invaluable opportunities that build soft skills and preparation for the real world. Some 400 students competed, and the winners will go on to the state-level contest. The Mentor High's speech and debate team has worked hard and competed well this season. We especially congratulate team captains Senior Casey Gray and freshman Ellie Coleman, who have qualified for the Ohio Speech and Debate Association state tournament that will be held in March. Last month, we missed the chance to recognize the Mentor High Model UN who traveled to compete at the Chicago International Model UN Conference before winter break. At the awards ceremony, Tatiana Sauerby won Delegate's Choice and Best Delegate, Isabel Cuniones won Outstanding Delegate, West Matthews, Charles Partlow, Theron Christakis, and Juliana Nichols won Honorable Mentions, and Zoe Barninger won Outstanding Delegate in Special Negotiations. Mentor's Junior High Model UN participated at the Cleveland Council on World Affairs Conference at John Carroll University, and the CCWA just celebrated its centennial season, and that photo at the bottom was one of the originals. The Mentor High School Mock Trial Team participated in the district competition held on January 26th before judges of the Common Police Court at the Lake County Courthouse. Students who won awards are Senior Veil Roberts for Best Witness, freshman Atlas Copley for Best Witness, and freshman Alexis Godek for Best Attorney. The Team One and Team Two defenses both won their trials. Our Mentor High School musicians had a stellar outing last Saturday at the Ohio Music Education Association District Seven Solo and Ensemble Contest. More than 100 events represented our band, orchestra, and choir programs at the adjudicated competition. District Seven serves Lake, Geoga, and Eastern Cuyahoga Counties. A selection of Shore and Memorial Vocal and Instrumental Musicians has been invited to join the OMEA Middle School Honor Band and Honor Choir this season. The choir performed together at Solon High School last month, and Mentor is hosting the Honor Band here at the end of this month. Bravo to Mentor High School teachers Mr. Byram and Mr. Novi for their engineering and home improvement students participating in the cardboard canoe race at the Mentor Community Recreation Center for the first time. The regatta tested the student-designed and constructed boats made of cardboard and just two rolls of duct tape. Participants had to paddle across the pool and back without sinking. Here's hands-on learning with real skin in the game. The One School, One Book Program is underway at Sterling Morton, Hopkins, Orchard Hollow, Ridge, and soon at Fairfax. The whole school reading a book together brings the added joy of building and expanding a sense of community among students and staff and expands family engagement. Mr. Popper's Penguins, Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, and Charlotte's Web are three classic titles that have been unveiled so far. A student-initiated sign language club is new to Shore Middle School thanks to eighth-grader Colette Chudal and Mrs. Megan Leganke. We love to see a student propose a great idea like this and are happy to see if it can be offered. The annual Mentor Schools Foundation Read-A-Thon has just ended. Each year, the foundation sponsors this fun reading program for our elementary students. Through the dollars raised, the foundation funds K-12 Mentor Classroom Grants as well as scholarships. For more than 50 years, the National PTA has sponsored the Fine Arts Program Reflections. Mentor students have again participated, particularly in the area of visual art, and winners will be announced soon. Last week, the Mentor High School Theater continued their centennial season with the suspenseful play Wait Until Dark. The performances were sold out. The Spring Musical will be the school edition of Stephen Sondheim's Sweeney Todd with performances April 18 through 21st. Congratulations to our 2024 District Spelling Bee champion, Shore eighth-grader Tyler Granito. He went on to represent Mentor Schools at the February 1st Lake County Spelling Bee and finished first runner-up out of all the schools represented. Over the semester, our third graders across the district will be making the trip to the James A. Garfield National Historic Site. Lawn Field, the president's, or the 20th president's home right here in Mentor, is a unique opportunity to walk in the footsteps of history. During their father's campaign, the two youngest Garfield sons attended the original Mentor Village School at the corner of Center Street and Mentor Avenue. Our fifth graders will be taking a field trip to tour the Cleveland Museum of Art this semester. Its vast, world-renowned collection is sure to delight. Speaking of the arts, Mentor Middle School will present Aladdin Junior onstage February 23rd and 24th, so get your tickets. The Memorial Art Department is designing its new logo. Winners are Ella Kosher and Ellie Noblock. Scheduling for next year for grades seven through 12 is well underway. Expanded course offerings and diverse electives aim toward the district's goal of meeting the needs and interests of every student. To that end, a Career Tech Expo was held on January 24th, so students could look at an array of options and ask questions. In collaboration with Lakeland Community College and the Lake County Commissioners, the Mentor School District has announced the launch of Lakeland at Paradigm for fall 2024. The college credit-plus courses are planned to include Composition 1 and 2, Basic Economics, College Algebra, U.S. National Government, Psychology, Trigonometry, and Effective Public Speaking. This will expand opportunities for students without the need to travel across town. Fifth and to sixth grade transition presentations are being offered this month for students and families to help make a seamless move from the elementary to middle school levels. Students will work with their parents in selecting their electives for fall. And speaking of fall, kindergarten registration for the 2425 school year will open on March 5th for our newest Cardinals. All children who will be five years old, honor before September 30th, 2024, are eligible, and we look forward to welcoming our fledglings in the nest next August.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's always so nice to see everything that's going on, the wide variety, and very well done. Thank you. Next, we have the Chief Financial Officer's report and recommendations.
Thank you, Madam President. Looking at our overall picture, our revenue collections indicate about $130,000 favorable compared to our forecast in November. Our expenses are down about $740,000, so a net positive impact on the cash balance of about $8,700,000. If we look at our actual revenue for the month in comparison to last year, revenue is up about $202,000, mainly because our investments are up in comparison to last year. If we look at it year-to-date, our local taxes are down $1.2 million. Again, we predicted this based on the collection split that we saw, but to offset that, we've seen an increase in investments to this point, up $823,000. So overall, again, looking at $130,000 positive variance, which is really immaterial because it's about a 0.12% difference from what we were forecasting, so we're trending pretty close on our revenue in comparison to our forecast. Looking at our expenses, expenses are down this month in comparison to last year at about $1.4 million. This really comes down to timing. We did not receive a tuition bill that we received last year, or typically in the month of January, so there's a difference of about almost $800,000. We are down in purchase services of about $400,000, and supplies, we're underspending by about $100,000 now. So those trends will likely continue based on some of the changes that we've made, based on recent discussions that we've had as a board, based on decisions Mr. Heath has made with his administrative team. Year-to-date, we're down $11.6 million, $11.7 million. Again, the majority of that coming from the fact we did not have that large transfer out that we've had in the past. Mr. Lynch is really trying to move along. He's skipping slides at this point. Expenses are within 0.65% variance, again, immaterial. We're down $740,000, which is good. You know, when we look at it in comparison to the forecast, it's only about a 0.65% difference. So again, trending very close on our expenses, so that's positive. You can hit that last slide now, Mr. Lynch. Just kind of summarizing, he loves it when I call him out. He, if you look at the slide, this is a summary of our work session and discussions that we've had, that I've shared with the board. I would just add that we did confirm that our maintenance, fleet maintenance plan that we proposed at the work session is feasible after talking to our Director of Transportation and her Coordinator of Fleet Maintenance today, so we will do that. And we will actually, are going to take 11 buses, was decided today with Mr. Heath's approval, based on their recommendations, off the lot, effective at the end of the month. The board did give us approval to auction off five of those, so you'll be seeing another request for approval to auction off six additional buses, which would bring our fleet down to 72 and give us 22 spare buses. 18 of those buses would be regular ed buses, and four would be special ed buses. That's going to save us, hard-dollar-wise, about $11,000 a year in insurance, which I'm proud to announce that you can see some substantial savings with our update in property and liability insurance savings that I shared with the board last week. We are switching carriers from Liberty Mutual to go to what's known as the Ohio School Plan. The Ohio School Plan is actually cheaper this year than our current rate that we're having. So with that, our coverages will be relatively the same. Our total district protection from a liability standpoint is theoretically larger on some level because of the way that they fund the various different categories, and we're seeing some, about $90,000 a year in savings if we forecast that over based what we were projecting based on our current rates. We also had, our gas contract is expiring at the end of June. We locked that in so that we have, don't see variable costs with gas, so as much probably many people in their own home do. We were able to utilize a contract through TPI, which we've had over the last few years, to lock in a rate of about 3.25 MCF, which is about $1.70 less than the next closest bid that we got from Ohio School Council. So those rates actually came in a lot lower than we were even projecting back in November. Gas has really kind of come back down because of the mild winter, which has been to our benefit, so we're actually only seeing about 0.8, or, you know, 80 cent increase on that, you know, going from 3.14 to 3.2, so about, you know, not even 0.08 actually, increase. So that's a pretty good sense on us. We're only seeing about an 8 cent increase per MCF that we use. So not huge savings, but when you're trying to get down $5 million by 2026, I know the guy to my left always appreciates it when we can find ways to do that without having to really affect anything with staffing. So put that on there just so that the community knows that this is just another way that we're looking to save costs when we look at our contracts for even things as simple as this with regards to gas savings. And we did lock that in for a year, so we will reevaluate that coming forward, so those numbers in the out years could change. That brings our three-year total savings to $3.75 million. Our goal, again, is a $5 million goal for the three years by 2026, so we're just shy of 1.2. I am proud to announce, though, that Mr. Heath and his team have worked very hard, and they've reduced our expenses by $10.5 million since the failure of the PI levy in November. So again, finding ways to continue to tighten our belts for that. So that savings, just to kind of reiterate, on the property and liability, will actually probably go up about $10,000 a year once we get the updated quote, once the reduction of the fleet. Again, because we insure our entire fleet, and we have to do that before that starts, because with our new policy, we can only reduce or increase basically one time a year. So after the policy starts on March 1st, if we reduce after that, we don't see a savings, but at the same time, when we add five buses that come in during that same time, we don't see an increase. They only do it at the term of the adjustment. So it was important for us to meet today, and I appreciate Ms. Weisen, she wasn't feeling well, she was actually out of the office, to still jump on that call with Mr. Heath and myself, Mr. Zambori, so we could get that information to our insurance company, and they'll be giving us a revised quote that'll be approximately $10,000 to $11,000 less. That concludes my report. Any questions?
I just, I just had a comment. I know that we are all, you know, really dedicated to saving money, and I want to especially thank Mrs. Payne for asking those great questions with rightsizing the fleet. It's really exciting to be able to see, it's like we found money. And I know it was, you know, because of the great questions that you asked, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Bill's always really good with digging further, so.
Yeah, you know, I talked to Mrs. Payne about a week ago, you know, just thanked her as well, because, you know, great board members ask good questions, and we have great board members on this committee across the board, and, you know, when people ask good questions, that allows us to challenge our thinking and kind of do things. And I always say that that's the biggest aspect of a board, is to challenge and ask good questions. So this is a great example of that, a team effort to make some substantial savings. So glad we were able to do that.
Okay, do we have?
Yep. Madam President, members of the board, I ask that we approve items B through H in one motion, please.
So moved?
Second.
Any more discussion? All right. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Apple.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion's carry five zero. That concludes my section of the agenda.
All right. At this time, we do have some unfinished business. We have an appointment of two members of the Board of Education to the Board of Education Scholarship Committee. So every year, the Board of Education gives a scholarship away to a student at Mentor High School, and we did have, everyone is in on the board, so the board scholarship is funded by us. As board members, we donate part of our salary to this scholarship fund every year, and because everyone is in on it, everyone has said that they want to be a part of the scholarship. We do have, we did have some people say that they wanted to be a part of it, so Mrs. Payne and Mrs. Marchaza, if you'd be willing to serve, look at the scholarship applications and.
Absolutely.
Any discussion or questions with that? With the scholarship? No? Okay. So this year, we are hoping to announce the scholarship with the rest of the scholarships that are at the senior awards ceremony, which is the beginning of May. So we're looking at maybe a end of So we're looking at maybe a end-of-March deadline, would that be enough time for you both to review the applicants?
Do you have any sense of how many applicants we might get?
I've done this process before, and I was, we really didn't have a whole lot, but that's because we only posted it with the guidance counselor. So if we post it elsewhere, we might get.
Yes, we should share this out and, and talk about this. So in the past, it's been about 10 to 15 applicants.
I know, I think I've done it a couple of times, and it was 18 or 20.
Okay.
So that'd be a few years ago, so.
Bigger classes back then.
Could be, or late time.
Very doable.
Yes, I think. You'll manage.
If, if there's a way we can send those out, is there like a link to the application that we can? There is an application, and the guidance counselors have a scholarship board that all the students already, on a daily basis, it's in their announcements with a link.
Okay, great.
So it'll go on that form, and then we can also advertise it?
Yeah.
To, to go onto that scholarship board, the guidance counselor scholarship board. And from there, we'll have, so if we're looking at end of March, I can put that on as a deadline, I'll send that to guidance and then.
Sounds great.
Go from there. All right, thank you, thank you both.
If we could get those put, the results digitally, the way the Mentor Schools Foundation does, that expedites reading things, you can easily redact the names, and it gives you a nice unified cross-section then.
Yes, we will ask guidance to redact the names.
Yes, that'd be good.
Just so, there's privacy there, and it's also why Mrs. Iapolo and I are not on this committee, because we both have seniors, so we would know too many people. Okay, our second unfinished business is a discussion of Policy 5136, which is personal communication devices. And Mrs. Iapolo did bring this, she wanted to discuss this, so if we could start with our current policy on the screens, and we can just go through what we have currently, and then we can discuss where we want to go from there. Because I know that we've all felt like, yeah, let's, let's bring this forward. Okay, do we, do we want to read it? I can. All right, 5136, personal communication devices. For purposes of this policy, personal communication device, the PCD, includes computers, tablets, example iPad-like devices, electronic readers, e-readers, Kindle-like devices, cell phones, smartphones, iPhones, Android devices, Windows mobile devices, smartwatches, telephone paging devices such as beepers or pagers. Put those away.
Fax machine.
And/or, and/or other web-enabled devices of any type. Students may use PCDs before and after school, during their lunch break, in between classes, as long as they do not create a distraction, disruption, or otherwise interfere with the educational environment during after-school activities, extracurricular activities, or a school-related function. Use of PCDs except those approved by a teacher or administrator at any other time is prohibited, and they must be powered completely off, not just placed in the vibrate or silent mode and stored out of sight. Students may not use PCDs on school property or at school-sponsored activity to access and/or view internet websites that are otherwise blocked to students at school. Students may use PCDs while riding to and from school on a school bus or other board-approved vehicles, or on a school bus or board-provided vehicle during school-sponsored activities at the discretion of the bus driver, classroom teacher, or sponsor, advisor, coach. Distracting behavior that creates an unsafe environment will not be tolerated. During after-school activities, when directed by the administrator or sponsor, PCDs shall be powered completely off, not just placed in the vibrate or silent mode, and stored out of sight. Except as authorized by a teacher, administrator, or IEP team, students are prohibited from using PCDs during the school day, including while off-campus on a field trip, to capture, record, and/or transmit the words or sounds, audio, and/or images, pictures, and video of any student, staff member, or other person. Using a PCD to capture, record, and/or transmit audio and/or picture, video of an individual without proper consent is considered an invasion of privacy and is not permitted. Students who violate this provision and/or use a PCD to violate the privacy rights of another person shall have, I'm losing my.
Their PCD confiscated?
Thank you, their PCD confiscated, and held until a parent or guardian picks it up, and may be directed to delete the audio and/or picture/video file while the parent/guardian is present. If the violation involves potentially illegal activity, the confiscated PCD may be turned over to law enforcement. PCDs, including but not limited to those with cameras, may not be activated or utilized at any time in any school situation where a reasonable expectation of personal privacy exists. These locations and circumstances include, but are not limited to classrooms, gymnasiums, locker rooms, shower facilities, rest bathrooms, and any other areas where students or others may change clothes or be in any stage or degree of disrobing or changing clothes. The superintendent and principal are authorized to determine other specific locations and situations where the use of a PCD is absolutely prohibited. Students are expressly prohibited from using covert means to listen in or make a recording, audio, or video of any meeting or activity at school. This includes playing recording devices or other devices with one- or two-way audio communication technology, such as technology that allows a person off-site to listen to live conversations and sounds taking place in the location where the device is located, within a student's bookbag or on the student's person without express written consent of the superintendent. Any request to place a recording device or other device with one- or two-way audio communication technology within a student's bookbag or on a student's person shall be submitted in writing to the Director of Student Services. The district representative shall notify the parents in writing whether such request is denied or granted within five days. Students shall have no expectation of confidentiality with respect to their use of PCDs on school premise property. Students may not use a PCD in any way that might reasonably create, in the mind of another person, the impression of being threatened, humiliated, harassed, embarrassed, or intimidated. See Policy 551701. Wow, I keep thinking it's getting close here. Bullying and other forms of aggressive behavior. In particular, students are prohibited, prohibited from using PCDs to, one, transmit material that is threatening, obscene, disruptive, or sexually explicit, or that can be construed as harassment or disparagement of others based upon their race, color, national origin, sex, including sexual orientation, transgender identity, disability, age, religion, ancestry, or political beliefs; and, two, engage in sexting, which is sending, receiving, sharing, viewing, or possessing pictures, text messages, emails, or other materials of a sexual nature in electronic or any other form. Violation of these prohibitions shall result in disciplinary action. Furthermore, such actions will be reported to local law enforcement and child services as required by law. Students are also prohibited from using a PCD to capture, record, and/or transmit test information or any other information in a manner constituting fraud, theft, cheating, or academic dishonesty. Likewise, students are prohibited from using PCDs to receive such information. Possession of a PCD by a student at school during school hours and/or during extracurricular activities is a privilege that may be forfeited by any student who fails to abide by the terms of this policy or otherwise abuses the privilege. Violations of this policy may result in disciplinary action and/or confiscation of the PCD. The principal will also refer the matter to law enforcement or child services if the violation involves an illegal activity, for example, child pornography or sexting. Discipline will be.
Imposed.
Thank you, imposed, I was, those two words, imposed on an escalating scale ranging from a warning to an expulsion based on the number of previous violations and/or the nature of or circumstances surrounding a particular violation. If the PCD is confiscated, it will be released, returned to the student's parent/guardian after the student complies with any other disciplinary consequences that are imposed, unless the violation involves potentially illegal activity, in which case the police department may.
PCD.
I'm sorry, the PCD may be turned over to law enforcement. A confiscated device will be marked in a removable manner with a student's name and held in a secure location in the building's central office until it is retrieved by the parent or guardian or turned over to law enforcement. School officials will not search or otherwise tamper with the PCDs in district custody unless they reasonably suspect that the search is required to discover evidence of a violation of the law or other school rules. Any search will be conducted in accordance with Policy 5771, search and seizure. If multiple offenses, can you roll up just a little bit for me? I'm on the line, thank you. Occur, a student may lose his or her privilege to bring a PCD to school for a designated length of time or on a permanent basis. A person who discovers a student using a PCD, recording device, or other device with one- or two-way audio communication technology in violation of this policy is required to report the violation to the principal. Students are personally and solely responsible for the care and security of their PCDs. The board assumes no responsibility for theft, loss, or damage to, or misuse, or unauthorized use of, PCDs brought into its property. Parent and guardians are advised that the best way to get in touch with their child during the school day is by calling the school office. Students may use school phones to contact parents and guardians during the school day. Okay, there's a lot of information there, so let's, let's break it down, and if you want to, well, I'm happy to follow that because, no, that was really interesting, no. So that's a great policy, I'm glad, that was, I didn't expect it to be read, so I think that's really nice to, for everybody to hear it. It is a good policy. Unfortunately, it's not being fully enforced to, so we can reap the benefits of it, so that's what brings us here right now. I first want to just talk about what I want to change, or what I'm proposing to change, and just a little bit of tweaking, a little bit of the language, and let me first just explain what I, what I mean by it. So my goal is not to completely remove the cell phone out of the building. I know a lot of area schools are starting to do that, and that is not my goal. I think that I would call it from bell to bell, so anytime walking into school, students can have their phones in the hallways in between classes, in your classroom while you're waiting, once that bell rings, your phone's out, gone, in your bookbag zipped up, not to be seen, until the bell rings to end the class, and the students welcome to use it in between classes, at lunch, and I would even say study hall, but that's, I guess, debatable. Of course, there are going to be extenuating circumstances, we have students that need their phones for medical reasons, that of course would be exempt from this. Mr. Heath brought up a good point, that we have English learning students that use it as a, I hadn't thought of that, so those, that would be, of course, exempt, as well as a student that needs it for an IEP. So there's certainly reason, like, students that could be exempt from that, and so, and I certainly respect that. And so I'm, when I'm talking about the language in there, those exceptions would have to be in there 100%. And I think that putting those exceptions in the policy and being very, just, we want to be able to cover exceptions, because as it was pointed out, to me, you know, there's going to be unforeseen educational or medical advancements, and we don't want to have to come back to the table and change the policy over and over. So I think if we make sure, we're careful with tweaking the wording a little bit. So the, really the only thing on there that I think we would tweak, besides pager, I think, nobody has a pager anymore, would just be the removal of the teacher discretion. And before I go into that, I have spoken to multiple teachers in our district, outside the district, principals, parents, I haven't had anybody say to me that they think that removing that discretion is somehow a sign that we don't trust them, or anything like that. It actually, I had, I mentioned that I had a member from the MTA come to me saying, "Thank you for bringing this up." I've had a principal in the high school mention that this is something that, that is needed, so I just want to kind of set the record clear that, you know, this is to help teachers just as much it is to help students. It's to support teachers just as much to support, we want to support students. So I believe that making a district policy change sends a message that we admit the old way isn't working, so that we're doing something about it, and that we're serious about this initiative. So I don't know, it sounds like we have a lot of, a lot of, a lot of us are on the same page in terms of knowing that cell phones in the classrooms are not very good, but I'm just, for maybe anybody that doesn't, hasn't done their research or at home, I'm going to go over a couple of things quickly. Studies show that this will improve student engagement in the classroom, improve behavior, decrease disciplinary issues, improve academic performance, improve classroom management, reduces their exposure to inappropriate content, builds interpersonal communication skills, students begin to engage with their peers. This improves the work environment for teachers and their ability to control their classroom and cultivate relationships with their students. This reduces time wasted on disciplinary issues. Strict policy allows teachers to feel confident in knowing that administrators have their back when enforcing this policy. So I had some students at the high school, I think we all had their PowerPoint shared with us in the 10th and 11th grade, and they had to do reports, they're reform projects that they do every year, and I would say half of the groups all did their report on removing cell phones from the classroom. So any thoughts that students are really against this? I think there are many that really, deep down, understand the benefits. As I had mentioned, I've spoken to teachers and member of the MTA, one of the, and this is something that I wanted to just share with his permission, that on the topic of cell phones, teachers are very frustrated with the lack of consistency in enforcement of current policy. So that's coming from the MTA, so this is something that, that teachers do support. I did speak with the principal, excuse me, at another school, and previously, when he was a teacher, and, and he was implementing removing the cell phones, I thought this was interesting. He had all of his students, they were in block scheduling, so 90 minutes, and he had all of his students create a list on a poster board of all of the apps that they get notifications for, and then every time in that 90 minutes, they had, they got a notification, they had to mark a tally. By the end of that 90 minutes, the students all were able to see, there were over 300 notifications, just from a 2022 student class in 90 minutes. And he said the students were in awe at how, just how much these phones were actually distracting them. So I think that might be a, an interesting thing to implement in each class. So why am I asking for policy change? Why remove the discretionary power for our teachers? I think if we are able to see real effects from removing phones, we have to, we need consistency. And currently, I know a lot of teachers are starting to implement this, but we need it to be consistent. I think that's the best way to help students adapt to their new norm and effectively wean them off of their smartphones, which is what we have to do. It can be accomplished, if this could be accomplished with guideline and handbook changes only, I'm all for it. I just don't know that that's enough. These have been around for quite a while. You know, you can't enforce a rule that is vague, and I think when you just put on there, teacher, just, you know, unless the teacher approves, it's pretty vague. And again, consistency is, is really key. You know, you don't want students to know, "Oh, I'm going to this period, and this teacher lets me, this teacher's cool, and lets me have my phone off." You know, what do they say, you don't want to give an addict a little bit, a little bit of their, of their drug. So we just need stronger language, and that would remove any scenario, again, outside of those medical or exceptions that I mentioned, where students feel like they can pester their teacher. This would remove the possibility of even discussing it. I know that when I sub, I don't even, I just leave it alone unless the teacher gives me the direction to say, "No, they, these kids know, there's no, there's no cell phones." And when I have that, when I have that blame, I guess you could say, I can blame it on, you know, this is the rule, the kids listen, and they, and they put them away. If, when I'm, when left to my own vices, I can't win a battle with the teenagers, they're just, they, they're relentless. So I think that that's one of the stresses that teachers are having with trying to enforce, is that it's a battle every single class, every day, and it's, that takes a toll. Teachers didn't sign up for that. So why is this worth our media attention? Why does it need to be changed? Again, I said, the, the policy language is vague, and, which is why phones are still an issue in the class. Let's just all assume that teachers require that phones are, are put away during class, but then allow them to pull the phones out even for the last few minutes of class, you know, if we want to truly see the benefits. know, if we want to truly see the benefits of no phones, we must remove that option, or that instinct to grab their phones, even if it's for free time. The last few minutes of class might be the only opportunity for students to interact with each other. Removing that teacher discretion portion of the policy will create the expectation for students that phones are not an option, and teachers aren't made to look like the bad guy. You know, this effort stands to improve school safety, academic outcomes, discipline issues, mental health issues. So, you know, I did have some people say that I was wasting the, the board's time, and, you know, this is exactly what we're here for, so I just wanted to make that clear. So, again, I'm not, I understand the need to, or the desire to maybe want to just change the administrative guidelines, but, you know, if something, if we're going to continue with the same thing and expect different results, I'm not sure that that's the best route, so I'm interested to hear what everybody, what everybody else's thoughts are.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So, thank you for bringing this up, I think it's an important topic, sounds like you did some, some legwork there and some background research, so that's really helpful to hear. I think what I heard you say, and some of what you hope to change in the policy, forgive me, but I, I think I, I read some of it already in there, so, and I, and I know too, that my son, when he go, he, you know, he goes to Memorial, he understands, the phone goes in the bag, does not come back out, except for in between classes, I can't remember if it's study hall or not, I know you mentioned study hall, but it stays in his locker, and he tells me, "Mom, don't text me, don't text me, I, I won't respond, email me," that's what, that's what everyone tells us to do, and so, that's, that's why I have some level of familiarity. So, I think that in some ways, what you're hoping for does already exist, so that's, that's good. I guess where I'm, I, I, I agree that they are a distraction, I, I, that's obvious, I think they're a distraction, not just for our kids, but for ourselves, there's no doubt about it, and, and we all need to learn to live a bit better with our cellphones at our sides. Where, where I'm, I'm struggling a little bit is, especially in light of, you know, all the things that I've learned so far about the, the role of a board member, in light of our conversation with Mr. Bennett from the C last week, you know, what I've understood so far is that the role of the board is to handle the how and the why, and the role of the administration, the superintendent is the how, is, is, you know, exactly how to do it, so if we're talking about, you know, why we're doing a thing, that, that's, that's the board's role, whereas Mr. Heath and his team, they're going to handle how to implement a program, how, which building to do first, you know, all those sort of drilled-down detail type questions, those are, those are what he and his team are going to deal with, and for me, this policy is long, it's quite comprehensive, and to me, it, it goes even a little farther than I think I would have, of course, I wasn't a member of the board when this policy was developed, so I think it goes super far, and I'm fine with that, I'm fine with it the way it is, but I, I do think, you know, evidence of, of going too far are these exceptions that have popped up for you, Mrs. Iopolo, where, like, "Oh, I didn't think about," you know, students who speak English as a second language, "Oh, I didn't think about this exception for healthcare reasons," you know, all of those examples, I think, are illustrative of the fact that we're, we're getting into that, that how space, into, and it starts to sound like we're, we're, I hate to say micromanaging, but it does start to feel like that a little bit for me, so I'm not sure what your thoughts are about that, but that's kind of, just based on what I've learned so far about what we're supposed to be doing, what we're asking our, Mr. Heath and our, his team to do, you know, that seems pretty clear to me, so thoughts on that?
Well, first of all, I, I did think of the medical.
Oh, sorry, my apologies.
Yeah, that's okay, I just, because that is a very important one, I didn't, you know, the, we, the board handles the what, correct? And the administration, the superintendent handles the how, and I feel like that's what we're doing.
Yes.
Because it's not working, you know, what, what we have this beautiful, wonderful, detailed policy, and it's not, it's not working, so what I'm trying to do is figure out, what can we do to tweak this policy so that they can enforce it?
So, if it's not being enforced now, how does, you know, removing a line about teacher discretion ensure that it will be enforced later?
So, good question, because right now, it's, it's a teacher's discretion, so if my child was to have, get yelled at for having their phone out, and go, and, and maybe they get in trouble and they go home, I, as a parent, I can say, "Why are you giving my kid, why is my kid in trouble?" Because according to your policy, the teacher, it's the teacher's discretion, and my kid says, "Everybody in the, in the class has a te," you know, has it out, or the teacher might say, "Sometimes I let it, let him have it, sometimes I don't," and that creates confusion for the kid, so, so what I'm saying is, if that teacher knows this is policy now, this is very specific, you know, there's no questions asked, and it, and it relieves that teacher from having to negotiate, it relieve, it allows that teacher to say, "This is the rule, parents are aware of it, students are aware of it, and I, and she, that he or she has to abide by it," and it, really, I think, in just saying that, it, it kind of puts the, the question, you know, there's no more argument, it's just, it's black and white.
I don't, I guess, to follow up on that, I mean, I feel like this is very black and white, what we have so far, but I, I do think, you know, getting into the classroom tends to feel out of bounds for the board, in, in my feeling, you know, I, I have talked to teachers, and I want to emphasize that I don't think anecdotes are evidence, I don't think, you know, this teacher says that, therefore, we should make a decision, I do think it's important when we make policy to make it based on data and information that is from the population we serve, right? So, so for me, you know, I've talked to teachers too, and some have told me, "Hey, I've got a system that works really well, I've got a parking lot, I've got a crate, I've got a bowl, that's where the phones go," so, you know, to me, I feel like we're kind of venturing a little too far into the classroom for my own liking, but that's my point of view.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. I think everybody has really good points, kind of going back and forth, and there's been a bunch of different opinions on this subject, and it's kind of funny being on the other side of this, because when I went to Mener, I'm going to date myself here, and I got my first cellphone in my senior year here, and the security guard took my cellphone, so, and, so they weren't allowed, and it was after the bell rang at the end of the day, and so my mom kind of fought to, for us to be able to have our phones on us because of the mass shootings that were happening, so it's kind of funny, full circle, you know, now being here, having this discussion. But I do have a couple of questions. First, I do think that there is value in the board having this discussion, and I see Ms. Iopolo's points about removing that section in the policy, because if our practice is going to be that we don't have teachers who do have, who are using that part of the policy, who are allowing kids to have their cellphones in the classroom, then we should ensure that our practice is aligning with our policy. So, I, I want to kind of speak about that, but I also have some questions. Is there a, is there a specific example, Mr. Heath, maybe you could provide it to me, of teachers that use this policy in their classroom and say, you know, "It's okay to have your cellphone out, we need you to get out your cellphones and use them for this purpose," especially if it's something, you know, is there an example of something that can't be achieved already on their laptop or on their iPad?
The only thing that I've, I've witnessed here recently, a lot of teachers in our science classes, when they're doing experiments, they'll ask them to pull their, you know, pull their cellphone out and use the timer on it, you know, again, could there be other pieces that they could use? Yeah, probably. And then, the other thing is just some of the video features and trying to, if they're doing some sort of recordings or video projects in a class, just a quick, easy way to, to take some video that they can use in a classroom project.
Okay, thank you for that. So, the timer thing, I think, would be, you'd be able, I mean, we do it here for board meetings, for public commentary, so I think that would be resolved with a laptop or an iPad. The other one that you mentioned about.
Project-based.
Yeah, project-based.
Yeah, video recordings for a project.
My question, I guess my concern with that kind of situation, and I'm not trying to dig into the classroom, I do think that our role is to set policy, and I just want to make sure that whatever our practice is, is aligning with our policy. But my question would be, you know, for that scenario, what if we have children who don't have cellphones, their parents can't afford it, or their parents don't want them to have a cellphone? You know, we talk about equity sometimes, and how, how is that equitable? You know, we should be providing those tools to our students, so I, I just don't see, I don't see where a teacher would allow, except for those extenuating circumstances that was our, that were already mentioned, I don't see where a teacher would allow, you know, cellphone usage in their classroom, and it, where it would be beneficial, but I do see different points, I mean, I've had teachers, retired teachers, students, I've had parents, and not all of their opinions align on this, so it's, it is a tricky one to kind of go through and, and to come up with compromises, I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing is going to align with our policy, so that there are no questions, it's not vague.
I'm all over the place on this one, too, I, I see the point, I don't, I think it does make it more difficult for the teachers when you have that wording, and at the teacher discretion. I work at a school that had a policy that all cellphones were, were hidden, we, we didn't have access to cellphones until we had a mass shooting, and we used to have an award even, the teacher who confiscated the most cellphones was, we had a trophy, and it was coveted, so I, we, we really felt that it was important to not have cellphones, that it was a distraction, and, and I see that. Now, as a teacher, I see uses for a cellphone, a lot of students will use their cellphone to put dates in there, and that's how they track their homework, that could be, you know, the end-of-the-class type of thing, too, and could they use their computer? Yes, it's just, it's a different tool, you could probably link your phone with your computer and your calendar, and I'm sure that there's runarounds around it, it's just, this is what I use to keep track of my things, and I, I think that some students do, too. I was on, I was one of the people that worked on this exact policy, so I remember seeing the different options, and one of those options was not to say teacher discretion, but it had them lined up, like, it would say, you know, "Except for medical," and a translator, and, you know, all of those things, so that is something that I think we could do. The discussion, I feel, the reason that we didn't decide that at that point was more because it seemed so restrictive, and that, that come back to the table, what if they wanted to teach kids how to access their emergency information, or teach a calendar, or take a picture of a science project, or make a video in class, like, using tools of technology, technology is a part of our life, and so, teaching kids to use technology too might be valuable in the lesson, and if the teacher feels it's valuable, it wasn't really meant as, "Well, if the teacher says it's okay to chat on your phone, you can chat on your phone," but more at the teacher's discretion if you were using it as a learning tool. So, we could possibly even delineate that, like, at the teacher's discretion as a learning tool, instead of just, you know, fun. To the equity point, I, that is a good point, not all kids have cellphones for various reasons, if we reverse that, though, and the only kids that have cellphones are kids with some kind of a medical issue or a disability, then it, it's also a little bit stigmatizing, so we have that as well. So, it, it's a tough, I, I see there's so many, it's, it's a tough issue, because I do like, inherently, I like, "Don't use your cellphone in class, it's distracting, we want you to, to focus," but I also want to respect the teacher's discretion, and, and their, you know, their academic freedom to manage their class the way they see fit, to teach lessons the way they see fit, their classroom management and their classroom discipline, I, I want to make sure that it is supported by the administration, and that they feel that whatever their policy is, that if they say, "Hey, you have to put it in this box," or "You have to keep it on you," that if they create that policy and a kid isn't following it, I hope that it is enforced.
I, I would have to point to that as well, you know, I heard Mrs. Iopolo say enforcement several times, and it sounds like this is an enforcement issue, and I, I don't know if we can ask you, Mr. Heath, to expound on that a little bit, and, and is there something that we're missing, you know, where teachers don't feel supported in enacting the policy and enforcing the policy in their classrooms?
And, and again, I, I would go back to, we've got a policy in place that just simply isn't being enforced right now.
Right.
And even at the beginning of the school year, when we first made the transition to our Neola policy manual, there were probably seven or eight policies that we tried to reiterate with our staff, this wasn't one of them, at that point in time, it, you know, it wasn't one of the, one of the hot topics, so to speak, and, and when it hit in early December, coming out of that MTA meeting, you know, we started to look at it, and as we looked at it, I'm like, well, yeah, what, why aren't we enforcing this? And, and that was my initial question, and, and I think that's where Mr. Crowe at the high school, working with the department facilitators, kind of started that process of, hey, how do we do this? And, you know, they've talked through some different strategies, it, it would be a very quick, easy set of communications for us to say, "Hey, we've got this policy, we need to reiterate it with staff, we need to reiterate it with our administrators, then we need to reiterate it with our students and our families," and say, "This is going to be implemented, and there are consequences if, if you're in violation of the policy." So, I, again, I would go back to, you know, let us try to enforce it first, and then if we need to tweak something that isn't working between now and the end of the year, you know, let's, let's revisit this and kind of talk through it a little bit more. Like I said, the other piece to this puzzle is looking at our, our handbook language, which, again, I, I've taken that and written the draft administrative guideline that we haven't even published yet, that, that really spells things out for grades nine through 12, what does it look like in grade six through eight, what does it look like in grades pre-K through five? Pre-K.
I know. Wait a second.
But, but again, you know, there are some little things there, and how each of those levels approach, how do you get in touch with your student as well, and, and that level of detail is spelled out in the, in the draft administrative guideline as well. I think that would be a good starting point. I do, I do agree, it's one of those things where, you know, we've got that teacher discretion piece in there, if we took it out, would it, would it help the teachers? Probably a little bit, yeah. Does it limit us a little bit more because it's in policy? Yeah. Where we can make adjustments on a dime with administrative guidelines, and, and again, that's why we're, we're kind of moving forward with some of that, pending the outcome of our conversation here today, anyway, so that we don't have to wait for a first reading, a second reading, and the approval, you know, we want to start making some adjustments now, and I know at the high school level, they're, they're ready to roll on a couple of things here as well. So, that's kind of where my headspace is right now. I think the one other thing that I'm not sure we've talked about yet, but again, as I'm, you know, walking halls at the, at the building level, and I know this has been something that was brought up from our MTA reps as well, was the, the, the use of earbuds and wireless headphones and those sorts of things, too, I, so if there was something that we wanted to tweak in that first paragraph of the policy, you know, we kind of chuckled a little bit with the paging devices and beepers and stuff, you know, I could see taking some of that out, you know, and do we replace that with, you know, wireless devices like earbuds and wireless headphones, just to be more specific there, and a little bit more up to date. And then again, let me talk out of both sides of my mouth for a second, too, that's the other piece with this, technology changes so quickly, as we're going through this process of, of tweaking policy, the, the, the beauty of policy is that it's, it allows more flexibility than the administrative guidelines would. than the administrative guidelines would. So we keep those a little bit more open-ended. And if we're being specific with the earbuds and the wireless headphones, you know, do we have to come back in a couple of years and we get a good chuckle about, oh, yeah, we remember when earbuds were a thing? And have to change policy again? So, you know, again, kind of talking out of both sides of my mouth there, but I think there's some things that we could eliminate, some things we could add if we wanted to tweak and be a little bit more specific. Or we could just take that out, period, and not have that, that part of the policy either, so.
I'm wondering, like you mentioned, we have to go back in anyway and get rid of those cool pagers. So we're taking the time and I think definitely should update the headphones. I mean, the kids, you'd think they're on a conference call to Germany with walking around with their headpiece in. It's not needed. So look how quick we just changed policy 0153, some of those words. So this is something quick. So I just feel like if it can help the teachers, we know it will help the students and it will provide consistency. And I think, I like, I like what Ms. Cook said. We should have a list of those exceptions and maybe make it so we're not, since technology and everything changes so quickly and so we don't have to come back here. We make it so that anything that might fall under, you know, a new advancement, we can give that superintendent approval. But what that would do, and especially with those exceptions outside of the medical and those are, you know, a teacher's really gonna, you know, a teacher would have to then do some kind of application process or, you know, reach out to the superintendent to get things approved. So you know those are not going to be, they're not going to be doing that to give the kid five extra minutes at the end of class, you know? It's going to be for something that really has an academic value to their class. So that's going to limit the amounts of exceptions that are just really for fun. So still giving the teachers the discretion because they can still go to you, go to Mr. Heath and/or even just the building principal, whoever, just to say, hey, this is, this is the, you know, educational purpose I want to use it for. And then I think we're covered. They still have more control over, you know, the use in the classroom if they really feel that it really will add value. But again, I think Mrs. Payne said, most of the things on their phones can be done on their computer. And maybe teach our kids how to sync because then they can teach me how to sync my phone and my computer. Because that would be, that's something you'll, you need once you graduate.
Would, would, I, good discussions. I mean, there are so many good points. But would you, do you feel like you have enough? I know you've talked to some people and I've had people talk to me, too. I think it is a real issue. So with, should we get a more formalized view? Like maybe using PLCs or BLTs so that, so the professional learning communities or the building level teams, so they can kind of say, well, this is what we do and this is what we work? And they could share amongst themselves to see what is working or not working? And then help inform us of what, if we wanted to go with exceptions, what we would want to include? Or if they're better off leaving it at discretion? Like maybe a broader look might be? I'm not opposed to addressing that because I don't think cellphones are the best use of school time at all. But there may be times that we're not thinking of that teachers are using it productively and they don't really have an alternative.
Is there a way we could do like a survey or something to gather?
I don't know.
Possible. I have, it's like both sides, you know? And there's just so many things to look at here. But I do think they are a distraction. I do think that there's been feedback from multiple perspectives about it. It is an issue, but what do we do about it? It's kind of hard to decide. But I do have a question about if we update the administrative guidelines, we still have to make sure they match the policy. So like, we can't have in the administrative guidelines that teachers won't have the ability to have that decision. If it's in the policy, we would have to have it match the policy.
Yeah, you would, but you could, you could set up in the administrative guidelines how they could use their discretion, right? There could be an approval process for that discretion to Mrs. Iopolo's point. I mean, you could write that administrative guideline pretty much however you wanted.
So you're saying if we kept the policy the way it is now, taking out the pagers? And then in the administrative guideline, that was more at the discretion under these reasons? Is that, is that?
Yeah, I mean, again, yeah, yes.
I'm glad we're having this discussion. This is something that I know all of us have felt concerned about. If you've raised a teenager, you look at your own phone more than you think you should, it's easy to fall into bad habits. And my biggest concern with cellphones is how ubiquitous social media and that obsession for, especially for adolescents, the opportunities for harassment or bullying in subtle ways, or even just the feeling of being left out. I don't get any, you know, likes on my social media. And it can sound sort of like, well, how could that be? But, you know, put yourself in the mind and heart of a 14-year-old. It's a lot harder than it would be for an adult and sometimes it's pretty hard for us. So I know I see kids with earbuds all the time. Sometimes that helps a kid focus and study. Mozart was my preferred choice when I was in college. But, you know, the smartwatches also bring their email through. And it's hard because they're so immersed in all of this. And one of the things that I liked that I think you said, Rose, had to do with, at the end of class, if everybody takes their phones out, they are solitary people. They're not interacting with a classmate, learning to make a little small talk or whatever that might be. So I think if we can dial back their use of social, or of the cellphone, for whatever purpose, at least in the time where they're with us, that it would benefit them. And, you know, it's funny, I think, Annie, did you mention, I think you mentioned about the phones and school shootings and all of that. And I had a conversation with a parent whose kids finished in mentor and she talked about, she told her students, her daughters, they are to keep their cellphones in their purses. They didn't, she didn't want it believed that there could be a time where they couldn't communicate with her, her peace of mind, for their peace of mind. And how do you make an argument against that in this modern age? So I like listening to all these excellent points. The idea that between now and the end of this school year, Mr. Heath and his team look at tightening and formalizing the administrative guidelines to capture the spirit of this policy. And I know there's a difference between spirit and spelling it out, but there's a lot there, a lot of detail. And if every staff member is encouraged to consider the wisdom of leaving the phone out of their classroom experience to the greatest extent possible, that maybe you build that common purpose and then standardize what everybody is doing because they recognize that for mental health reasons, along with a whole bunch of others, you know, cheating and the rest. And like, you wouldn't want a translator and you're a foreign language class. That would be very.
Chat GPT.
Chat GPT. That's another good point. Yeah, AI coming up. So that we can help kids use their own organic ability to be in the world without the crutch of a device. I'm all for that. And then if it turns out that that can't be accomplished well, that we could revisit tweaking the policy in some way to formalize it, if you feel that that would be valuable, Mr. Heath.
That sounds very reasonable. And, you know, I, of course, again, wasn't here on the board when this was written, but it sounds like from what Mr. Heath is saying, it's quite a departure from what it was previously, especially if we were talking about pagers and such. But so with that in mind, I hadn't even thought of that, you know, that this, that we could be in this transition phase of, you know, we're in the wild west of technology where we're trying this and that's not working. We're trying this and maybe this is working. But it sounds like, I'm more inclined to give Mr. Heath and his team some time to roll out proper communications, to, you know, get together with teachers and stakeholders to understand what's working in terms of enforcement. Because again, this sounds a lot like enforcement is the issue. And I'm just disinclined to go back to policy in the, you know, the House, the foundation, and change something there when we don't even really know how, whether, why, what's working and what's not on the ground. So that's, that's my feeling about things so far.
You know, that's, that's a good point. But we have to ask ourselves if, you know, an MTA certainly doesn't represent every teacher, but a large, a large amount. If they're saying this is not being enforced, we need help. I mean, I can read the.
Did NTA provide you with a?
Yes.
A statement?
The president, yeah.
Just that speaks for the entire membership?
Yeah.
Oh, I would be interested in seeing, perhaps you could share that with everyone.
So, and he also reached out, I forwarded you some of his, he made additional statements and I forwarded that to the board. That they, you know, that that's, this is something that they recognize we have a policy. It's not being enforced, help. So I feel like the longer we wait, I mean, certainly we need, we need, I would be interested to find out the different ways teachers are using the phones so that we can add that to our list of exceptions. But I feel like time is of the essence. I have a freshman, I, she is competing with other students in other schools and that are already have very strong, tight policies that are enforced and many other around here that I've been speaking to are in the same boat we are. They're frustrated, we have a policy, it's not being enforced, so let's, let's start doing something about it. So, you know, I'd like, I feel like time is of the essence if we're going to make these little changes anyways. I think we could, it would make sense just to make, you know, this has been around for, Craig, you said, I think, we knew for sure seven years, but then there was a policy like it back 18 years ago. So it's, it's been around a while. And so, you know, it might be time to make a little bit of an adjustment to see more results.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I appreciate everybody's points. This is kind of back and forth, you know, there's just so many angles to look at it. Just some other notes that I kind of had on this. I think there's also a greater discussion to be had about electronic usage in our schools in general. I know we've kind of talked about it in the curriculum liaison committee before, too. Like what is the right amount of time for the iPads? What's the right amount of time for the laptops? I do have concerns about, you know, that as well as the phones. And I did provide it when Mr. Heath asked for our comments and, you know, our insights. There's a lot of things that we do to try to help the social emotional intelligence of our students. And I do think possibly removing, you know, phones from just kids being on them and for social media purposes and things like that. Also electronic usage, you know, I want to make sure that we have the right electronic usage for elementary versus middle school versus high school. And I know the curriculum team at the last curriculum liaison committee that I was on, they kind of were going to dig into that as well. So I'd be interested to hear, you know, what the research was on that. But I do have concerns about interpersonal communications. I think it's really important that kids get face to face. And I don't, I don't want to see them at lunch. I know Ms. Iopolo said, you know, at lunchtime, she'd be okay with them having it. I don't know how I feel yet on that because I want them to talk face to face and I don't want kids immediately going on social media during their lunchtime. I want to see kids have that interaction because there's a lot of nonverbal communication that's not given when you're doing it electronically. So I have those kind of concerns, too. So, yeah, I, I don't know. It's just a lot of different things to look into.
So would you be open to gathering information on how staff feels about that for lunch?
Sure, yeah. How might we do that? I'm just curious. How would we survey the staff? And indeed, if the MTA has voted on a statement of support of some sort? That's something I would absolutely like to see and include in whatever survey or research we conduct at the schools. How might we do a survey such as that? Anybody, certainly people who have been on the board longer than myself.
Couldn't you just do a simple Google survey with each building? I would think local questions and local data because each administration, each student body may have small variations that that would, asking the staff, is this a concern? What are some of the things that we could do to make changes, make improvements? Is that something that could be done without reinventing the wheel?
Yeah, true, true.
I think the only building that we really need to have true conversation around is going to be the high school. When you look at the middle school policy, students are not permitted to use personal technology, technology devices during the school day. In the elementary buildings, students are not permitted to use personal technology devices during the school day. All we have to do is just enforce what we have in our handbook. At the high school level, it says students are permitted to use cellphones during class exchanges and in the student center. So student center would be lunch and.
Who wrote that?
Probably Mr. Wade.
You can blame me for all this circa 2012. You're welcome.
He also wrote in there about pagers and beepers, too.
I still had a page at that time.
Afforded a limited dad on 2012.
The other thing that it says in the high school policy is students are not permitted to make phone calls, text and/or any other use of a personal electronic device during class time. Which again, I think gets to, you know, what we've been saying here as well. And again, that's handbook, current handbook language that, again, when we've been saying this over and over again, it's just not being enforced right now. So if we, yeah, I kind of think of this like the NFL, you know? Every year they, okay, they've got their rules book and, okay, what slides, what doesn't? You know, okay, what's the point of emphasis here this year? Okay, if we need to make this a point of emphasis, let's make it a point of emphasis and enforce the rule and clean it up. And then, you know, if it's still not working for whatever reason after trying to reiterate the enforcement of this, then, okay, then we need to change the rule, which is kind of how the NFL works, too. So that would be, I think, our next step, then. And we've got a couple of months that we can play with this here at the end of this school year to get our arms wrapped around it and see if the enforcement is actually going to be worthwhile. And then, you know, let's revisit this and, you know, when we get into May, June and figure out if we need to make those adjustments. And specifically, what are those adjustments based off of, you know, some of those exceptions? Some of the things that maybe teachers are, and again, I think teachers should be asking administrators for, you know, for some sort of guidance in how they might be utilizing some of these things in their classroom, anyway, so that way we can collect some of that information from them. Okay, what were teachers coming to you and asking you to use those for? So that we can kind of report back a little bit more on what we've seen here towards the end of the school year. But again, I think just using that handbook language, which again, is what I'm doing, using for the administrative guideline, basically says students aren't to be using these things during class time.
Mr. Heath?
Mm-hmm.
Just a quick question on that. Because if, we have in the middle school handbook that students are not permitted to use personal technology devices during the school day at all. But then we have a policy that says they can use it in between classes and during lunch. Doesn't that, isn't that like kind of not meshing? They don't match and so we need to do something to make them match?
Yeah, Mrs. Payne, that's something that we learned about at the conference, or that I learned about at the conference, the OSBA conference. They mentioned that, that there's, there has to be alignment, especially when you have a big policy overhaul like we just did, that you have to ensure that there's alignment from employees, student handbooks, you know, any district procedures, protocols, it has to be aligned. And that was going to be one of my questions for you, Mr. Heath, for our meeting eventually, is do we have that alignment? It sounds like maybe we don't.
We don't, yeah.
Because.
But we do, we do approve handbooks at a board level, so inherently they are policy.
Yeah, we could be more specific in the policy to have it broken down by grade level if we needed to do that.
Well, this policy. Well, this policy is certainly new. I, I think we can all agree, it's, it's not a year old, and we have some things that we need to work out with it, with the enforcement of it, and making sure that everyone feels, that they realize that it's a priority. And I think to Mrs. Iapolo's point, it, it's not a waste of time because bringing this discussion, it, it brings, it makes it a priority. And everyone has heard that we are all unified in this right now. We are all saying, hey, this needs to be enforced right now. This is a, this is a priority to us. And let's, I'm, I'm kind of proposing that we would give it the time to make sure everyone realizes, hey, we've just all said this needs to be enforced. That we really, we get this as a young policy, let's enforce it, let's see how it goes. And if it's not workable the way it's written, to, if it's not enforceable the way it's written, then we do need to come back and, and change it so that it is. But I would like to continue to gather information of what's working and what's not working, and maybe ideas from the staff on what they need. And, and I'm sure that our administrators can do that for us, to, to get that information, let them manage those types of things. You know, ultimately, the teacher is the adult in the room, and I want them to feel empowered to enforce the policy and to know that they're supported by it. But they, they have to set the parameters in their classroom, the discipline in their classroom, and, and, and enforce it and know that they're supported.
Mrs. Cook, that sounds really reasonable to me. I would just ask us if we're going to, you know, if we're going to embark on this, let's see how this goes with enforcement and changes. We should probably do that sort of data collection or survey so we can establish a baseline and, and, you know, just to see where teachers and staff are in terms of their feelings on things. And then, you know, after a certain agreed upon time passes, we have the ability to survey them again so that we can measure progress in a, in a sort of realistic and data-backed, data-supported way. I, I just, I don't know, it's my, it's really, you're going to hear this from me a lot in my tenure, I think, but I really need those numbers and that data to show us that yes, we are making progress, yes, we're making decisions that are supported by evidence. So that's, that would be my suggestion.
And ultimately, no matter what the policy says, if it's not enforced, it doesn't matter.
That's true.
You know, so we have a, a very substantial policy, a lot of detail, and I have faith that our administration team, our excellent superintendent can pull things into alignment so that there is consistency, so that it's clear for kids, you know, the speed limit's 35, the speed limit's 35, not 40, not 43. You know, I mean, we're all guilty of pushing things.
For me, it's always 40.
You know, and, and teenagers are an absolute version of us.
Really quick, I just wanted, Ms. Marchesa, I didn't, I don't, you mentioned a vote with MTA. The president came to me with saying, here's the message from us, from their meeting. I don't know if there was any kind of vote.
Yeah, I just, there's a difference when, you know, one person, who, who is the president of MTA?
He was representing, right, yeah.
Sure, but the way the union works is they, they tend to vote on things before they offer their full-fledged and formal support for such a thing. So that's what I was asking about.
But you do believe that statement came out of a meeting? It was a discussion that they said, we're, we're bringing this forward.
Right, right.
Did you want to share it, or?
You shared it with us.
I shared it with you guys, yeah.
You don't want to?
Okay. And then also, you know, like, like I said, time is of the essence. I, I'd like to do this sooner than later, but if you guys are hopeful that, you think that suddenly, because of the will of wanting it enforced, it's magically going to be enforced, I, I want to believe. I'm okay with like waiting and seeing how that goes and then revisiting. But I, you know, I'd like to, you know, really, I'd like to be able to see results and be able to, and then come back to the table because, you know, it has, even though the, this specific Neil update is new, it's basically the same policy has been around for a while. So I like, I like the, that we're hopeful. It, it just, you know, it seemed that teachers didn't really feel that it is enforceable, but whatever, I'm, I'm willing, as long as we can come back to the table with it. And I think too, just having this conversation, people will see this meeting, people will be educated, teachers, it's going to be out there, and we're going to get a lot more feedback just from having this discussion, so.
And I think what I can do then is just give like a, in my superintendent report each month, just, hey, here's the update on, on what we're seeing out of that. And again, like I said, I, the majority of this is going to be high school centric at this point, but, you know, we'll, we'll make sure we're reiterating that pre-K through 12, but, you know, we can give those updates. And, you know, if there's, if we need to pivot sooner, we pivot sooner. But, yeah, let us, let us get through the, kind of that enforcement communication piece to the puzzle and, and see how the next couple of weeks go here and, as we're starting to implement some of that. And, and we'll just give some, some updates on a monthly basis as we're going through the rest of the year here.
Mr. Heath, would you also be able to run it by our attorney about the handbook versus the, just to make sure we're covered?
Yeah, and, and so, Annie, what I'm looking at specifically, because I wrote this down too, is taking a close look at paragraph two of the policy itself and seeing if we need to have some specific language regarding the grade levels based off of what our handbook language says.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, under new business, we had two members attend our Ohio School Board Association training. If there's anything you want to share about that?
Which one?
Whichever, if you want to go first or-
The new member training?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay, sure. Thank you. So, yes, first I want to thank the board and the community for, you know, allowing me to attend and, and supporting me in that effort. I learned a lot. I met a lot of good folks, including a couple of men are alumni, so it was always, it's always good to see cards out there, especially serving in similar ways, serving their communities. Some of the big takeaways I did mention earlier, and many of, many of these points are actually very relevant to the discussions we've had today. Roles and responsibilities certainly of the board, where the board handles the what and the why, whereas administration handles the how. Asking good questions, which we actually talked about today as well, and communication and public participation. We, we addressed all of these issues on the first day. Legal issues and governance, especially like layers of governance, so similar to, you know, we need alignment with all of our guiding documents. You know, governance and, and legal issues, that, that comes into play for things like the Constitution, statutes, the Ohio Revised Code, court decisions, you know, board policy. These things are not always in alignment either, and that was really interesting to think about too, and way that, ways that can cause complications and conflict for, for board members in their discussions. Another really important takeaway I thought was interesting was when we discussed ethics, how school board members out of, you know, folks who are elected into office are actually held to higher standards than many other elected officials, because we have to comply with education statutes, ethics laws, and the criminal code, as well as our own OSBA Code of Ethics, which is in our policy as well. So that was really interesting to think about. Day two was chock full of policy and school funding discussions. I learned a ton there as well. It was good to have that very mapped out conversation about school funding, which is highly complex. I learned a lot about policy too, so that was helpful in going into this conversation today. Big points, not everything needs to be a policy. I also go into contracts, handbooks, district procedures, everything we talked about today, but that alignment is really, really important, and that was something that I took away from the conference. I also took away that we should not include, as a best practice, not to include too many details in policy, because it does tend to tie the hands of administrators and staff in doing their day-to-day business. It was also recommended not to create policy impulsively or based off of one incident or issue that occurred, to, you know, making policy changes based on just like a single incident is, is bad, bad practice. And then finally, something I mentioned already today, collecting data that will inform our policy changes, and also consider the far-reaching impacts of those policy changes before you make them, and, and consider whether or not it supports mission and vision, of course, at all times. So again, thank you for supporting me and going to the conference, I really enjoyed it. I look forward to the next one.
Thank you. I know that was thorough. Is there anything you wanted to add?
No, yeah, I, I only got to go to the Friday session. I was able to look at and review some slides from Saturday, I was disappointed to miss it, but basically everything she said, talked about boardmanship, it really went in pretty deep into all of the wonderful things OSBA provides. And I actually, they talked about their legal hotline, and I actually used it. And it was, it was very efficient, just as they advertised, and, and very informative, and I, and I was able to reach out on, you know, as I was doing my research for this policy. So thank you to everybody for allowing us that opportunity.
Great, thank you. I know Mr. Heath wants to bring up one more thing.
Just one thing for new business, and, and just to put this out there, looking at, because I talked a little bit about transportation earlier, but looking at policy 8600, one of the things that we'll need some, some guidance from the group on here probably sooner rather than later, since we're dealing with the routing system, is we currently have as our walking limits in our board policy for kindergarten through grade five, it's anybody that is within 1.3 miles of the school. And in grades six through 12, it's 2.0 miles. We believe-
That's a long walk.
Yeah, it's, yeah, can you imagine a kindergartner walking 1.3 miles? So one of the things that I think when we're looking through this possibility is that this may have originated back when we were in fiscal emergency and we're going to some of the, the state minimums, or at least approaching the state minimums on things, just from a cost-saving measure. Really over time, and again, this goes back to aligning policy and practice together again, we, we've kind of been operating under the practice of K through eight being within a half mile, not 1.3 miles. Grades nine through 12 is still a two-mile piece to the puzzle, but one of the things as we're digging into this a little bit more is we, we saw some research out there that really it's like 57% of freshmen actually take the bus, and I think it drops down to like 10% of seniors take the bus on state average. So that two miles doesn't really concern me too much, but just some guidance from this group, whether or not we feel like we need to adjust that 1.3 miles down to 0.5 miles in our policy. Because if that's the case, we can get a first reading here at the next meeting for that as well, if everybody's agreeable to that.
I know one of the concerns that I recall from the fiscal emergency time I was teaching at that time, and the walk-in zones were greatly expanded, but then you have to make sure you've got crossing guards appropriately, so it's not without some cost. But the bigger consideration was safety, based on, in some cases, individuals who are on the police radar as being unsafe for children, and small numbers of children walking down the street. It, it caught everybody and gave pause. And so when you don't have a lot of kids kind of walking together, that's a much different scenario. In the old days, you know, once upon a time, almost everybody walked or rode their bikes, but that's changed so much. And if we don't bus students in, parents, especially in inclement weather, will be motivated to drive their children, maybe carpool their kids in the line of cars. Poor Mr. Hammond over there knows the misery of, of the long line. And, and I just think common practices have changed for families, and to not take that into consideration would be a mistake. So I, I can see the half mile being a more reasonable threshold.
So just to clarify, currently it's K through five is 1.3 miles, and you're proposing K through eight a half mile?
Yes. And then nine through 12 would still read as 2.0, because that is our current practice still.
Thank you. Is there anyone opposed to that, that doesn't want to see that at the next? Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll put together a first reading for us in March. Thank you.
Okay. I, I think that is all for new business. Hearing of the public.
Our first speaker is Lindsay Wall. Our second speaker is David Lima.
Dave Lima, Litchfield Drive. Board members, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wall. Black History Month provides all of us with the opportunity to learn and reflect on black history. We are fortunate and greatly appreciate the staff and teachers within the Mentor School System who provide that same opportunity for our students. As a gesture of that appreciation, our group, Support, Public Education, and Mentor, wishes to present a book for consideration as an addition to the school's collection. Poemhood: Our Black Revival, History, Folklore, and the Black Experience, is a rich and thoughtful anthology exploring centuries of poems from 37 writers that encapsulates the depth and diversity of the Black experience through poetry. Verse written by contemporary and ancestral poets, an intergenerational collection of Black poetry, reveals the importance of folklore, community, and tradition. The poems help the reader to acquire a new sense of insight and sensitivity into the Black experience, as it did for me. The editors follow each poem with information about the selection, including the historical context and analysis, giving the reader insight into the meaning of the poem. The book is recommended for those six, 13 years of age and up, and can provide a rich learning experience for those who read it. I'll share that with you after the meeting.
Thank you.
Ms. McCormick.
Again, I'd like to share some excerpts from inappropriate books available in our schools for our children. Empire of Storms by Sarah Mass. "The hardness of him pushed against her, and she bucked her hips, needing to grind herself against him to do anything to ease the building ache between her legs. She slid her hand between them, and when she closed her fingers around him, marveling at the velvet-wrapped steel, Rowan groaned again, pushing into her hand. She pulled her mouth from his, staring into his pine-green eyes as she slid her hand along him. He lowered his head not to see her, not to kiss her, but to watch where he's, where she stroked him. But Rowan gripped her wrist, drawing her hand away. She opened her mouth in protest, wanting to touch more, to taste more. Let me, Groan, Rowan groaned, onto the sea-slick skin between her breasts. Do your worst, prince. Rowan's smile was nothing short of wicked, as he pulled away to run, broad-hand from her throat down to the juncture of her thighs. She shuddered at her sheer possession and its touch, her breath coming in tight pants as he gripped either thigh and spread her legs, bearing her fully for him. Rowan kissed her navel, then her hip. Alan couldn't take her eyes off his silver hair shining with saltwater and moonlight from the hands holding her wide for him as he, his head dipped between her legs. She moved her hips, undulating, begging him to go, 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 so Rowan did, sliding a finger into her as his tongue flicked that one spot. Oh, gods, she was going to explode into starfire." This book was challenged, was challenged August 21st, the August 21st meeting, regarding sexually explicit materials. So when exactly can we expect to hear your recommendations for this book? Perhaps this new policy isn't working as efficiently as expected. Let me read some excerpts from a book in the elementary school that was taken- Let me read some excerpts from a book in the elementary school that was taken home by a second grader called Right Now: Real Kids Speaking Up for Change. It states, "When she was born, the doctors thought she was a boy. It happens sometimes, but Jazz is a girl, call her she. Although she's faced many harsh words and wasn't allowed to play on girls' sports teams, for a while, her activism led to trans kids being allowed to play soccer on the U.S. Soccer Federation teams. Jazz continues to speak out on behalf of transgender kids and people everywhere." This book goes on to talk about how children need to become social justice warriors and transgender activists. Since when is this type of book appropriate for elementary students? It goes against basic biology and parental rights, not to mention the fact that House Bill 68 was recently passed in Ohio that makes it illegal to allow a boy now to play on a girl's team and to use their bathroom or locker room. Why has it taken months since it has been challenged, and we have no answer? This book, like many others that have been challenged in our elementary and middle school, calls for children to become activists. How about we choose wholesome books and leave the activism to their parents? You have forgotten your role. You will see an active anti-levy campaign this time around if you don't start responding to the community and parents' concerns. Stop sexualizing our children, stop trying to make them political activists. If you don't, we will actively pursue an anti-levy campaign and ensure everyone is aware of your agenda and what you're using our taxpayer dollars for. We will support you the way you supported us, by voting no on any future levies. We will ensure representatives on this board know our stance, and remember, you need a four-to-one vote in order to put a levy on the ballot."
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for your time. I'm relatively new to the area, so I was in anticipation of beginning to come to these meetings, I was surprised when I went to view the first video of the first regular meeting, the vehemence within, with which the board was attacked for being biased. And so I went back and I viewed the special meeting that was sort of the organizational, I would gather, and was surprised to see how well the process of that attack was orchestrated by the discussion around the Vice President's position. And I really would encourage the board, being, coming from a social psychology perspective myself here, that the members of the board, I'm encouraging you to pay attention to how you present your information, otherwise, because in the way that that information is presented, the way that you make your positions, you stimulate such attacks as what we just had, and what we had on the first board meeting. And I really hope to be able to comment on those things further as we go along. I've got a background, a degree in education, and will be sharing with you my thoughts as we go. You five individuals have control in many ways over what you get from your audience, as evidenced by the attacks that happened at the beginning of, or at the first meeting. So, just wanted to share that with you, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sednik here. Ms. Muzika.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Heath and Mr. Wade, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I was pleased to hear Mr. Heath say that he has studied the cell phone policy and will be making some recommendations. I am sure that reviewing the administrative guidelines will prove a solution. It seems the policy itself is appropriate, and a review of the guidelines with staff will be all that is necessary. I see no reason to take the decision away from teachers. Phones may have many positive uses in the classroom. Consistency can be achieved by administration reviewing the guidelines and supporting teachers who have problems enforcing the policy. If we were to do this, what would the board consider next? Would a teacher puts up on their walls or doors?
Thank you.
That concludes the second session of public participation.
We have an executive session on the agenda this evening. There will not be a vote following the executive session, so when we reconvene, we will adjourn the meeting. Of course, you are welcome to stay if you like. Do I have a motion to move to executives? So moved?
Second.
Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Marchesa.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
We adjourn to executive session 9:34 PM.
Yeah, for sure.